...overview of the City of Leavenworth manager's proposed 2025 operating budget and a recap of some of the CIP information that we had. Before we begin, just want to extend my appreciation and compliments to the staff, Roberta and her team, Penny, all of the department directors. Spent the last couple of months doing an incredible amount of work preparing for tonight and then ultimately as we move forward through the budget. They've been great to work with, very supportive, done a lot of hard work. And so what I'd like to do tonight is just provide some general overview and information regarding the budget. So away we go. Start with the 2025 operating budget considerations. The 2025 operating budget is balanced as required by law and builds on the city's goal to provide high-quality service while maintaining sound financial standing. Some of the considerations include ensuring that we provide quality service delivery that includes public safety, the largest-
Full viewing on YouTube. So it's fun.
You good, Ed?
Ed, you might want to mute your phone.
Yep, I did.
All right, so ensuring quality service delivery is including public safety, you'll see that the largest portion of the operating budget will take care of public safety, some core functions, infrastructure, responsible financial and workplace and workforce management, as well as upgrades to the information technology staff and infrastructure that we talked a little bit about at the CIP and as well as staffing, okay? Some considerations, the financial impact to residents and businesses, value for taxes paid, optimal revenue and expense structure, the mill and utility rates, as well as future obligations in the form of debt issued and reserve levels. The other consideration is attracting and retaining a quality workforce. We feel like that's incredibly important to make sure that the city runs well. Talk a little bit about some of the forecasting and how we came to some of our decisions. Watching for the effects of inflation on operating costs. The city is active in many markets from consumer goods to industrial chemicals and materials. The city purchases equipment, specialized items, supply chain-dependent items, and local items. Work is done with suppliers, vendors, and trends to forecast operating costs. We have a lot of information, spent a lot of time studying costs and expenses. Anticipating shifts in revenue based on potential economic data. City is heavily reliant on sales tax for operations and capital budget items. Sales tax is the most volatile revenue source. In recent months, we've experienced a decrease in sales tax collections due to decrease in consumer spending. We've adjusted the 2024 projections as well as the 2025 budget to reflect a much more conservative outlook as a result of those, of that information. And then obviously, we're working for long-term health of the city, planning for the future growth needs and expectations. Up next, we'll talk just a little bit about the reserve policy. And so the 2024 budget projects our year-end targeted reserve position of 30%. To maintain the current levels of service during a period of reduced revenue collections, the 2025 budget projects a year-end general fund reserve position of approximately 21%. So we did need to tap into our reserves a little bit to put the budget together. We're still in good shape, and that's over what you were required to, but we did, we did need to do that. Some of the 2025 proposed budget highlights as we move through this. Continue our pay-as-you-go management, payment management program, that was important. Continue all current city services and operations with no new program expansions, but some following staff changes. Again, the IT department, we're going to add, propose to add one full-time system and administrator position. I think if you take a look around the Kansas City area in the last three months, you've seen some pretty high-profile cyber attacks, the cities of Kansas City, Kansas, and Missouri, the scout camera systems, there's been a lot of attacks in communities of, particularly governments have suffered as a result of that. And so in our assessment, we evaluate that we need, we've got some gaps and some holes, and so we need to work on getting better in that. And so that was a priority that we established as part of the budget prep. The streets department, we're going to propose to add two full-time positions that will focus their efforts on curbs and sidewalks. When we have the meeting on the 28th, Mr. Faust and Mr. Burleson will be here to talk a little bit more about why that's important, but the key component of this is that there's no new funding that's necessary to do that. We are transferring some expenditures from the Streets Capital Project Fund to fund those two positions. So we're not getting new money, just rearranging things internally a little bit to do that. The recreation division, one part-time position added to the recreation. This is about the theater. The staff at the Parks and Rec, and particularly the Rec, spending quite a bit of time and effort helping the theater do their productions, ordering scripts and that sort of thing. And so they need a little bit more help to continue to do that. We had some pretty honest internal conversations about whether or not we were going to ask them to go from, say, seven performances a year down to maybe four or five. It takes a lot of work to do that, and the Parks and Rec staff helps them do that. And so to help them do that, Mr. Grant is asking for one additional part-time person in the Rec Department so they can spend some of their time helping the theater continue to function at their current level. In order to fund that, there is a special parks gift fund. We're going to take some money out of that to help offset some of those costs.
That would come out of their taxes.
Right.
Well, it'll only cover a portion of it.
It's not all of it, but enough to where we can move forward with it if you would, if you agree to that. And then some changes at the city clerk's office, we're going from a full-time position down to a part-time position, we feel like that's going to work. And then in the probation department, one full-time position converted to a, from full-time to part-time. So collectively, when you look at all of that-
Well, it's not all of it, but-
Everything okay, Ed?
Yep.
Okay. So collectively, as it relates to that, when you, you know, add all the full-time, part-time conversions and all that, essentially what we're doing is ultimately going to add one half-time position. That's what equally it adds to in terms of the budgeting number. Okay, questions about that?
Could, to fund this part-time recreation, like, I have a daughter that does the theater, and they don't charge, could they, like, baseball, T-ball, we charge, you know, they charge what, for fees? Can any of that go to cover a position?
They sell tickets to go to plays, there is revenue. So, so the revenue for the adult shows goes directly into the recreation program already, and the cost of running the theater is more than the revenue than they collect. There is a net, a gross net, like, the ticket sales minus the direct cost of the program is positive, but that helps pay for the maintenance, et cetera. There's a youth, there's two youth plays a year, they also charge for the youth plays, and then the concession sales for the youth plays, but those revenues go into the special park gift fund. So that, that program spins off between about $6,000 and $8,000 a year. So that is profitable because all of the costs of running the PAC, the building, are over in the recreation fund. So there, that's accumulated over time, and what we're proposing is that we transfer $10,000 out of the special park gift fund to the recreation department to fund a portion of a part-time person. So a part-time person, a half-time person fully loaded with benefits, et cetera, is about $28,000 a year. So about a third of that would be paid for by the program itself, and that's about the amount of time that we're estimating that they're going to take to support the program. So basically, the profits they're making with the youth program, ticket sales, and with the food sales, will pay for the portion of that person that will be supporting the PAC.
So when we charge, when a child signs up for T-ball, they're charged a fee, right? Or are they not? Is it free? Is it 20-
No, they're charged a fee.
There's a fee to sign up for T-ball.
So that's what I'm saying, when a child signs up for the youth program, why don't we charge them $25 or, to participate, like they would T-ball, bring them on, I mean, I'm just, just throwing it out there, I mean, there's 50 kids, well, not always, but 30 kids on stage. I wouldn't mind as a parent, I mean, it's a $5 ticket, which is great, but I feel like, I could, I feel like as a parent, I would invest more in the theater to, to help the staff out, is what I guess I'm saying.
Yeah, I think that that makes a lot of sense. You know, we did have a conversation about maybe, you know, transferring that, that admin work to the, to the PAC group, but that didn't seem like that was going to work very well. So what we're trying to do is come up with a solution where we're still doing the work that we're doing for them, to support them-
Right.
-without it being an additional burden to the city's bottom line.
And I wanted it too, I just, I was just being-
I don't think that that's a terrible idea. It would be nice if we could generate a little bit more revenue. That's something that I think we can discuss, discuss in more detail next Friday.
Okay.
And we'll do some work in advance of that, to make sure that we're ready to talk about that, okay? And so any other questions about the staff piece? So then again, a full execution of all previously scheduled capital improvement projects with an emphasis on scaling back on park expansion and refocusing on park maintenance. We talked about that at CIP, we're really growing, it's been a lot, maybe it's time to kind of scale back. I'll talk about one example, one perhaps exception towards the end regarding the gazebo park, if you want to talk about that, but relative to speaking, sort of out of the expansion piece down into a maintenance piece. And then increasing the payment management program by 5% over 2024 and fully funding the sidewalk and curb program at $416,000. So those are some of the budget highlights. Let's continue the budget highlights, okay? So this piece here, the 2025 employee compensation plan recommendation is a base 3.5% cost of living increase for employees, that's what we would propose as part of the budget in 2025. And then ultimately, a recommendation of a flat mill levy at 26.962 for the city and library combined. So I'll talk about that, if you look at the chart that's on that page, the top talks about assessed value it bills generate. The property valuations for Leavenworth County went up 3.88%. You see on the far right, it's represented at 3.9, we rounded that up.
Within the city, not the county.
I'm sorry, the, within the city, I'm sorry. The second chart, you see there where it addresses mills. The library is elected to raise their mill levy by .035, and that is specific to the increase in cost of healthcare for their employees. To make sure we have a truly flat mill levy, I am proposing that the city reduce its mill levy by .035, essentially matching and canceling those out. So our about, flat mill levy would be truly flat, combined between the city of Leavenworth and the library. Questions about that? The, the percent of property valuations is represented on the very bottom, on the right-hand side, it would be an additional $318,224. That's what the increase in property valuations represent in terms of new revenue for the city. Everybody understand that? Questions about that? Ed and Griff, are you still hanging in there?
Yeah, you're good, Pat, thank you.
Just, you know, in terms of the, the stuff there, scaling back the revenue projections, those are some of the, you know, motivating factors there. And again, a flat mill levy proposed generates an additional $318,224, okay? Some of the rationale that we used in terms of making the recommendation. The commission has determined the need for supporting, attracting, and retaining staff, I think that's important, and we've, we've talked about that. The commission has shown support for responsible use of operating reserves. Staff in the commission have been diligent about watching expenses to ensure that needs are provided for and program or project expansion are carefully considered, balancing what we need versus what we want. Commission goals, input and feedback, and informed needs and priorities laid out in the 2025 operating budget and the 2025 through 2029 capital improvements program. Sales tax revenue collections decline in the first three, three months of 2024, therefore, the 2024 projections and the 25 proposed budget are very conservative. The city has multiple tools to modify expenditures, so for example, if sales tax continues to decline and we don't see any correction in that regard, we can delay projects, we can freeze positions, we can do a variety of things to continue to maintain, you know, good budget management, but we're in a position to, to respond to that if we need to. Some of the factors involved in the flat mill levy, again, a decline in estimated sales tax and franchise fee collection. This is relative to factors that are outside of our control. A complete retention of all revenue streams. A flat mill levy proposal is based solely on current and 2025 forecasted conditions and is an issue that should be analyzed each year based on new information and data. Local governments are subject to mandates from other levels of government that can dramatically impact the shape and composition of budgeting and tax structures without regard for local government's ability to provide service at levels expected by residents and businesses. So for example, you've heard a lot of discussion about eliminating sales tax for groceries. Now, they elected not to do that, they kept that at the state level, but if that mitigates its way down to the local level, it would be our projection, that would be a loss of revenue of between 1.2 and 1.6 million dollars, or somewhere between four and six mills. That would be something completely outside of our control that would impact our budget. There's some discussion about exempting people from property taxes, there's some discussion about veterans over a certain age being exempted from property tax, or veterans that have disabilities being exempted from property tax. And so if those things were to come to fruition, the city of Leavenworth would be impacted by that. So we have to take all those factors into consideration as potential impact, and then we'd have to have some much tougher discussions if we had that much revenue decrease. Then again, commission direction to continue to provide service to ensure the city of Leavenworth is viewed as a good place to work and is to focus on improvements over expansion. Property taxes. Looking forward, the budget management team remains concerned that an increasing reliance on sales taxes, a portion of general funds revenue, makes the city more vulnerable to national economic trends. In its most recent update, the city of Leavenworth's credit analysis, Moody Investor Services cautions, "The city's reliance on economically sensitive sales tax revenue is a credit challenge, could become a factor." In addition, "A portion of sales tax is tied to a 1% countywide sales tax that sunsets in 2035, and, based on the allocation formula, which includes population plus taxes levied, as the city's levy decreases in comparison to the county and other cities in the county, our portion of the countywide sales tax would decrease." The management team is concerned that a continued trend of decreasing local and countywide sales tax along with flat mill levy is setting the stage for a decrease in city services. Property taxes are the only method to bring about cost recovery and expansion in many key areas the city is pursuing for growth, business and industrial and manufacturing. Property taxes ensure the property owners contribute to the upkeep and improvement of the local pub, public goods they benefit from. So just as an educational piece to this, this lays out how taxes are collected throughout the entire county and state. So if you look on the far left-hand side, the total mill levy collected is 120.479. Taxes are collected from the state, county, the city of Leavenworth, obviously, the school district, and the library. The city of Leavenworth's collection of those mills is 18.7%, so a relatively small piece of the overall pie is what's collected. On the far right-hand side, it's slightly different, if you live in the city of Leavenworth but you're in the Lansing School District in the south end of town, you see that those numbers are there. We have a little bit different variable, it should be noted that the city of Leavenworth has a more diverse stream of revenue than school districts in the county, including sales tax, franchise fees, fees and fines, et cetera. And so we put this in just as an educational piece of the total overall piece of the pie in terms of what the city of Leavenworth collects, okay? Questions about any of those things? All right, so now I'm going to turn the presentation over to Roberta because we're really going to dig into some very specific numbers about how we progress through the process.
Well, as Pat said, the city experienced an increase in assessed valuation from 304 million to 316 million dollars, which was about 3.9%, and the proposed budget keeps the combined city and library mill flat. This will generate $254,941 in tax revenues for the city and about $63,000 for the library. I did do an analysis of how much of that 3.9% increase is on improved properties and new properties versus existing properties. Existing properties that weren't improved constitute 1.2%. So if you own a home, you haven't improved it, the average assessed value for that house has only gone up 1.2%. So 66% nor 70% of that increase in assessed values is for new and improved properties. As Pat said, the library budget proposes a 0.349 mill increase. I want to clarify that the library doesn't say, "We're going to raise our mill this much." The library gives us a budget that they believe they need to run the library. I calculate the mills and let them know how it would impact, so they don't have any idea what the mill's going to be until they give it to me. They're basically saying, "We need this much money to run the library," than the, the, what they call their general fund, that mill actually went down a little bit, and the mill for the employee benefit fund went up more than the mill for the general fund went down. So there's a small increase. So as far as the county, local and countywide sales tax, the first three months of this year, so, so 2023's sales tax collections, almost exactly what 2022 were, I think it was $36,000 more than in 2022, which was very surprising because we budgeted much more than that. We budgeted more than that for 2024 as well. So the 2024 forecast has been downgraded and we're going to, we budgeted to receive a lot less sales tax than we thought we would at the beginning. So what I did for looking at 2025, remembering that's a year and a half away, right, we don't know what's going to happen in 2025, I went back to 2017, to the pandemic, right, and said, "Okay, what was our average sales tax increase?" And use that to help inform what we think our sales tax will be in 2025. We believe that the reason consumer purchasing was so high in 2021, '22 is because of pandemic-related stimulus by the government. Well, that money went away, 2023 people stopped spending money, and we are making an assumption that in 2024, 2025, we're going to go back to pre-pandemic about 2.5% a year. So I'm budgeting that sales tax collections will increase 4.46% over 2023, remembering 2023 was pretty low to begin with. So we are, we are budgeting a 2.23% increase per year, 2024, and then 2025. And then this paragraph basically describes that, I don't need to, you can read that, but that, that's the process I went through to try to come up with a number that we thought was reasonable, not too conservative, not too aggressive. Of the $515,000 in additional sales tax that we're going to collect, I'm sorry, the, the general fund will get about $515,000 of the $754,000 in additional sales tax, $23,800 is going to go to the Economic Development Fund and $306,000 to the Capital Improvement Fund, and that is split up based off of city ordinances. Any questions about how we projected sales tax? Okay. So the next slide is, excuse me, is there a question? Okay. This is just, this is the pie.
Hey, Ed, did you have a question?
It's Griff.
I'm Griff.
Okay.
Okay. This is the general fund, and this is revenue only, $22,940,000 in what I'm calling new revenue. If you remember that revenue conversation we had, there's a whole lot of revenue that isn't really money coming in. So what I'm removing from this is any transfers, I'm removing the beginning fund balance, I'm removing any interest, intracity revenue. So the city is budgeted to collect 22.9 million in revenue in the general fund in 2025, and as you can see, almost 50% of that is sales tax, 19% is property tax. Franchise fees, they were, they were going up sort of like this, and now they're going like this, so we budgeted those to be absolutely flat with 2023, no growth in franchise fees at all. And then we have charges for services. Interest income, I believe you all are aware that we had about $1.7 million in interest income in 2023, which wasn't budgeted, we budgeted much lower than that. That made up for the decrease in sales tax. We actually finished 2023, started 2024 with the reserves that we thought we would. 2024 is similar, we're having, we are still aggressively investing our, our reserves, and we still have some ARPA money, and we still have the project money we've been saving for Fourth Street, et cetera. So because reserves are high and, and interest rates are high, we're really trying to take advantage of that. What we're projecting in 2025 is interest to go down a little bit. We're projecting 1.3 million in interest revenue in 2025 for two reasons, one, because we're going to, we're spending $4 million on, or $3.8 million on Fourth Street this year. So we're spending a lot of the money that we've been holding through these big projects is going to get spent in 2024. And then I believe interest rates will decline sooner or later, and that's a year and a half away, so I wouldn't be surprised to see interest rates falling back. Right now, we're getting about 5.2, 5.3% for our six-month treasury notes. Any questions about revenue? The next slide is the entire city. This is, the last slide, this is general fund, this is the entire city. So this includes the, the enterprise funds, the sewer fund, the refuse fund, all, all the other funds. And you can see there that the sales tax is, becomes a smaller piece of the pie, 34%, but it's still a third of the city's total revenue, and charges for services are 21%. So that, that's your refuse fees and your sewer fees and the stormwater impact fee and, you know, everything that we charge for. Intergovernmental, the 14%, that would be grants that we are budgeting to receive, it's, the liquor tax is considered intergovernmental revenue, the money that we get on, the tax we get on gasoline from the state is considered intergovernmental revenue. So that's what makes up that piece of the pie. Any questions about revenue as a whole?
No, not yet.
Not yet? Expense highlights, as Pat said, we are recommending a 3.5% across-the-board increase. I'm not excited about that, I'd love to see that be a bigger number, but considering the fact that we're already eating into reserves, we felt we need, we wanted to stay at least slightly above the CPI index and maintain our purchasing power, our employees' purchasing power, but, you know, so we think it's reasonable request, increase to request. If you look at total salaries, they're budgeted to go up 4.2% or $568,000 in 2025 over the 2024 budget, and that is because that adds the two new, well, one new position, the IT Systems Administrator, and then the IT Director is, we have an IT Director in the IT Department instead of an IT Manager, so there's a difference in salary there. So those two added together, plus the 3.5% increase, get us to about $568,000 more in salaries, not salary and benefits. We're budgeting health insurance costs to increase 5%. Obviously, we never know that, and it seems like we find that number out the day after the budget is approved every year. Last year, we had like a 25% increase. There is some noise that we might actually have a decrease in our premiums this year, but Lana, Lana recommended using a 5%, she felt like that that would be fair. So this increase would be about $730,000 more than the 2023 actual health insurance. And the reason that number is so big is because the 2024 went up so much. I don't have, I can't compare to 2024 actuals yet, so a lot of our comparisons are compared to 2023 actuals, those are the only, those are the most recent real numbers we have. Capers and KP&amp;F both increased the contribution rates, and those expenses are budgeted to increase about 9% or $245,000. That's a combination of the increase in rate plus the salary increases, so those things both- So those things both impact that. We're actually budgeting utilities to go down compared to the 2024 budget. They'll be a little bit higher than the 2023 budget, but what we saw in 2021 and 2022 were really high utility rates. And then in 2023, and so far in 2024, they were much lower than they were. So we kind of over-budgeted utilities for a couple of years. So I'm, I'm hoping that this, the budgeted utilities were getting more to a new normal. And then...
Hey, hey, Roberta, I'm sorry, just a quick question. What's the main driver in the utility decrease right there?
Oh, you tell me, I don't know. I mean, it, it's probably weather-related. It may, we also had the, the big, the big freeze in '21, I believe it was, where the gas prices got really, really high for a short period of time. So it's, it, it...
Okay.
I, yeah, I don't know. But what I do know is we over-budgeted in twen, we kind of, in 2023, we were looking at 2021 actuals, and we're like, okay, we need to budget based off of 2021 actuals. Well, 2021 actuals were very high because of the severe weather. And then in 20, then 2023 actual collections were, were lower than what we budgeted, and they were lower than what we budgeted in 2022. So I think that, that, we kind of had a knee-jerk reaction to how, to the, to the utility expenses in 2021, and we're just now getting things sort of back to normal.
Okay, all right, I appreciate that, thank you.
IT contractual services are budgeted to increase 32%. The contractual services include all of our software. We are purchasing new software that is cybersecurity-related, and we're also upgrading our Microsoft to 360, is it 360 or 365? And mostly for security reasons. So the next slide is our budgeted expenditures by function in just the general fund. So we have the $25 million in expenditures, which is a little bit higher than what you saw in the revenues. So if you remember, in the revenues, we weren't including our carryforward balance, right? So when you look at this difference, you can see that we're spending some of that carryforward balance. But the police and fire together make up 69%. So 69% of the general fund budget is public safety, with public works at 12%, the city administration, HR, the courts, all, you know, the things just to keep the city running is 5%. And it's... Any questions about expenditures in the general fund?
No. Is that normal? I mean, not normal, but it's common?
Yeah. For public safety? Oh, I would say so.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, they're by far the, I mean, what percentage of the workforce is the police and the fire department?
Sure.
I believe.
Yeah, I figured.
So if you look at the city as a whole, that's the next slide.
It sounds a bit...
So our total expenditures are 50, are budgeted to be 59 million. Again, these expenditures don't include any transfers between funds or fees charged between funds or our budgeted reserves. The public safety is about 29% of the total budget, capital projects 18%, and debt service. If you add those three together, you're at about 55% of our, our budget. And then we have public works, sewer and storm, housing and parks and wrecks, all about the same portion of our budget at 6 or 7%. Any questions about expenditures? And then my, my last slide before we give this back to Pat to wrap it up is, you've seen this slide before, but it basically shows the city resident what, how much the services cost them and what they're getting in return. So for a market value home of $250,000 and with our current mil rate of 22.533, how much does that cost a homeowner in property taxes that they are paying for the city of Leavenworth? And that answer is $648. So somebody that owns a $250,000 home in 2024, they, $648 of their taxes went to the city. And that works out to about $54 a month. And for that $54 a month, we, they're paying for police protection, snow removal, street repairs, the community center, animal control, fire protection, code enforcement, our parks and playgrounds and pools, our parks are extensive, capital improvements and health and safety inspections, which we think it's a pretty good bargain. But it's just a reminder that when you see your tax bill and it's $5,000, well, the city's getting 650 of it, and, and we are supporting all of the city's services with that money.
So I just wanted to take two or three minutes here to recap the CIP. The conservative sales tax projection, approximately 6 billion, a little bit, 6.1 million dollars in 2025 sales tax collections and CIP funds. Okay, we'll take out $1.2 million for transferred out of debt services, $1.7 million transferred out for streets, curb and sidewalk projects, a little more than $2 million transferred out for the annual parks and recreation support, and about $64,000 transferred out for the TIF projects, leaving a balance of a little over $1 million for new CP, CIP projects. And again, those were invested generally in the IT equipment improvements, obvious necessary police, fire, engineering, public works, parks, equipment replacements, and park maintenance projects. Continue, increased spending on payment management program by 5%, leveraging city funds by seeking matching grants for city projects. Continue to replace major equipment at the wastewater treatment plant, purchase front loader at the refuse department, and use all available stormwater assessment fees to complete the most urgent projects first. Do want to make a statement about one change from the CIP. We had talked about in the CIP, increasing the stormwater fee. We've heard some comments from the commissioners and from the public, and so although we express our concern about that, that we expect significant problems to develop in the 2025, we're taking that increase out and leaving it the same.
Thank you. I was going to bring it up if you did.
Okay, so on to a couple of issues that I want to talk about. So I had one comment from a commissioner about the gazebo park, okay? In the CIP budget, the gazebo park is not scheduled. Remember, we identified it as a project, but not being scheduled, it was not funded. If in your considerations of the budget, you advise the staff to move forward, we have a plan to do that and can, and can pay for it. The gazebo park is located in the downtown Hotel TIF district. The gazebo park is budgeted at $515,000, and there is a balance in that TIF district of $529,734, so that would pay for the gazebo park. I would just say the following, the TIF district and those funds give you a very wide latitude of what you can do with it. You can fix streets, you can repair sidewalks, you can build a park, but I did want to address that. That was asked, was there a way to do that? And there is a way to do that. That money is available now. It would not affect the operating budget or CIP, it's held separately. And so if, over the course of your considerations of the budget, you want us to do that and give us direction, that would be how we would do that, and we could do that. Okay? Questions about that?
Well, I guess, we're, we're, we don't know, we're going to have less, I mean, that would be something that I'd be willing to put off if, if we had, if we came up short.
The park? This park?
Right, so...
Put off for another year.
But it's not on it right now, right?
So the, the gazebo park could be built with this money separate from anything else. We, we would not have to put off anything else or delay anything else. You could take the TIF money and do that, but I just would remind you, you can do a lot of things with that TIF money in the TIF district. And so just for your consideration, before the 28th, if that's what you wanted to consider, we could do that, we have a plan to do that.
And this five, the streets and...
Streets, what, what other things? What other things could we do?
You could repair streets, you could...
In the TIF district.
In the TIF district.
Storm sewers?
Yeah, I think that there's a wide latitude of projects that you could do within, but it has to be in the TIF district. And again, that money is already there and in a different fund set aside for that. But that was a specific question about how we might be able to move forward with the gazebo park if we wanted to do that.
Okay. I'll have to think about that one.
Right. Okay?
Jay?
Yes, sir?
How is the, the TIF, the TIF fund, how, how does that get its money? From what source?
It's a, it's a property tax incremental tax. So there's a base value of the properties in the TIF district from the, for the development, the redevelopment, and then the difference between the base value and the current value, the, the increase in assessed value, the taxes on that get transferred into the TIF fund by the county, because it's a TIF district. We were using the money to pay off the bond, but the bond's been paid off. So now those, that, that tax increment tax is going into the TIF fund and waiting to be spent by the city commission.
Thank you.
And it's about $150,000 a year.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Up next is the Wilson Avenue project. There's been some discussion about that over the course of the last year or so to improving the Wilson Avenue roadway for better access to the businesses located in that, off of that roadway. So the staff does have a plan to move forward with that. So if you look at the chart, we'll see Wilson Avenue project would cost $1,680,000 to construct, okay? If you look there, the design expenditures have already been incurred. We have already spent some money to design the project, so we have a good idea of what it would look like. We have previously allocated $603,000, a little more than $603,000 from ARPA money and community development grant funding, which was allocated to the project. So there's already that money that was allocated for it. And then there's also an offset, there's a utility water line that would have to be moved, that's quite expensive, that the city and the water department would share, and so that would offset that by that $147,000 amount, leaving $815,000 for, that we are, that we would have to fund to do the Wilson Avenue project. There is currently a balance of $1.473 million in the Economic Development Fund, and we could allocate those monies to that difference and move forward with the Wilson Avenue project in 2025. Okay? A couple of things about that. I've talked individually with all of you about some other projects that are still at the staff level that are likely to ask for consideration for economic development incentives. And so we would want to be mindful of that. But if the commission gave guidance to staff to move forward in 2025 with the Wilson Avenue project, we could do that. And so I wanted you to have that for consideration as we move into the further discussions on the 28th.
Sure, I think this is a priority.
Okay. Questions about that? And then, you might recall, five or six weeks ago, maybe a month ago, we were here talking about street closures downtown. We put $5,500 into the Economic Development Fund to offset costs associated with street closures for events downtown. We spent some time analyzing the big one that we had. It was about $750 in terms of staff time and resources and the like, and so we feel like we could do seven or eight events in the central business district that were that big. Obviously, more if they were smaller in terms of the footprint and all of that. But we have some money to do that to help offset those costs, and so that's in there for your consideration.
So this is my fault. I did tell Pat once that that money was coming out of the Economic Development Fund, and that stuck, but it's actually coming out of the CBB fund.
Oh, okay.
It's in there somewhere.
I got that.
I was wondering...
I was wondering, because that's what Griff had suggested.
Yeah, it's, it's coming out of the CBB fund.
Did you hear that, Griff?
Uh, no, not quite. What fund is it coming out of?
The, the CBB fund.
CBB, like you suggested.
Oh, okay, okay. No, that's cool, that's cool. I appreciate you guys, um, no, yeah, thanks for that, I didn't quite hear that, so thanks.
Okay, so the next step, this was all in preparation for us getting together for a full day, starting at 8:30 in the morning on June 28th. We will obviously answer whatever questions that you might have tonight, or if you have some specific thing that you have read in the CIP and that you want to point us in the direction of making sure we change something or something like that, we're glad to entertain those tonight. Or obviously, in advance of the 28th, you're welcome to email us, and we can be ready to talk about those things specifically. But otherwise, Roberta provided each of you with your book, and Griff and Ed will have to get your books to you as soon as we can, so you can take a peek at it and start getting yourself ready. So maybe go around the room, starting with you, Mr. Mayor. Do you have any specific questions or comments you'd like to offer?
Uh, no, I appreciate that, Pat. First of all, thank you, Pat and Roberta, for getting everything put together. It's good to see it, you know, even on the slide deck, just going through everything and, and, you know, it'll be good to keep her thought. I've got various different questions right now, but I kind of want to let it simmer in bed and kind of go through everything again. So I like doing a review like this on a study session to get everything out there. So definitely have a lot more questions, but I appreciate it right now.
How about you, Commissioner Hengel, do you have anything?
Just one, following up on the gazebo thing.
Yes, sir.
You said, there's, there's lots of, there's lots of, what's called, other project, other things that can be done with that money. And I'm curious as to whether the staff has come up with anything that they recommend should be done instead of the gazebo.
So I think we've talked conceptually about that. The purpose for tonight was, I got a specific question about the gazebo park, and was there a way to do that? And so I think the best approach would be on the 28th, we'll have a list of a half a dozen things, maybe identified, that would be options for you to consider, make sure we have good information to give you. Just the, the general answer to that question is, you have wide latitude, as long as the funds are expended in the district.
Yeah, no, no problem there.
Okay. Anything else, sir?
No, that's it for me.
I just have a question. Fourth Street, when we do Fourth Street, are we having additional expenses regard to that, that the city has to pay for?
I don't think so.
We revised the CIP budget for Fourth Street to $3.8 million from the 5.2 million. And the, the bid came in for the construction at a little over 3.2 million. So there should be, and, and the 2025 CIP budget assumes we're going to spend 3.8 million. So, so we should be fine within the money that's been set aside for that project.
I remember that, we talked about that. I just didn't know if there were any other incidentals that we needed to cover outside of that.
Don't jinx it.
Landscaping.
Oh, landscaping, oh, okay, yeah.
Other stuff that are not included in that.
Once they opened all that up, what they find.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, that sounds great. No, you answered my question about the fees. I don't want to raise the fees. We have, how, how long has it been since we put those fees in place for the stormwater?
It's... I don't know exactly, I'd have to go back and look, but it's been four or five years.
Okay. Well, that hasn't been, I mean, I just don't want to raise fees.
Okay.
I just have a request. Can I have the slide deck sent to me?
It has been, didn't you email it to all of them?
I emailed it to you this afternoon.
Oh, wait, okay, I haven't checked my email, sorry. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, let me know, but I, about 3 o'clock today.
Yeah, I really enjoyed the slide with the breakdown of what you pay for taxes for the city. That's a great slide, because it's easy to explain it that way to people, so I appreciate you doing that.
That's it from us.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, do I have to adjourn it, because I never opened it, right? So we're done.
We're done.
We're closed, all right. Thank you, have a great week.
All right. Thanks, everybody.
Bye, guys.
You got your gavel, you can do it if you want to.
Good job, that was really great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
You're welcome.
Thank you for...
Forty-nine minutes.
Thank you, Pat.
That was a little...